Welcome everyone, we just had a closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to report out from the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council has approved the settlement agreement with A&amp;M Restaurants and Atom Light for unpaid rent and utility charges incurred by the former restaurant operator at the Poplar Creek Golf Course. The terms provide for installment payments totaling approximately $96,000 in exchange for the city's dismissal of its complaint without prejudice. The council member vote on the settlement was unanimous. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mason. And now we are having a study session on affordable housing funding strategy. And here to facilitate that discussion, Sandy Council.
Yes, good evening. This is Sandy Council, Housing Manager. And tonight, we are going to talk about our various housing funds that the city has and priorities for programming those funds. So the city has a variety of housing funds to support affordable housing. The primary sources currently are the commercial linkage fee and the city general fund contributions, which was set up when we no longer received tax increment from the former redevelopment areas and the city decided to put aside some general fund amounts for housing. We also receive loan repayments from loans made from programs that are no longer funded, such as the housing set aside of redevelopment when we used to have redevelopment and the federal home program. And then also, over the past few years, the states passed a lot of housing legislation that's making several new resources available that the city can apply for to leverage our existing resources. So tonight is about providing the council with an overview of options for programs as well as the uses of these funding sources so that we can focus on the priorities that are important to our community and the council. With our current resources, we have funds already budgeted or tentatively committed for housing projects, including $7.5 million for the downtown site projects, which will be coming to the council for final approval in August. We also have money funded, budgeted for our single-family rehab loan program, minor home repair programs. Both of those are provided by our partner, Rebuilding Together. We have an ongoing first-time buyer resale program that we support financially. Each year, we set aside a little bit of money for the countywide emergency homeless shelter at Safe Harbor. And then through our CD, Community Development Block Grant Program, the city sets aside a small amount of money for community funding for public services. And there are housing-related services that are funded from this program. So if you put all these commitments and budgeted funds together, it's close to 8.5 million that we have in place. So I just wanted to clarify that that funding is already budgeted and committed. And for the rest of tonight's conversation, I'm going to focus on the funds that are still available after those commitments. So these are fund balances that we're estimating at the end of this fiscal year that are available now for assisting affordable housing. So first, I'm going to focus on the housing programs that we've either done in the past or that we have some experience in managing. So first is new construction. That is what it sounds like, new construction of affordable housing. This is what we're working on with the downtown sites right now. This also includes the apartments under construction at Bay Meadows. Over the years, the city has primarily used its affordable housing for these kind of projects. And we've used the money for everything from land acquisition to actual construction costs, covering the fees, operating funds, anything related to new construction. Acquisition Rehab is also a program that the city has traditionally managed. I already mentioned our single-family rehab program for low-income homeowners. But also, over the years, we have worked with nonprofit developers to buy market-rate apartments, repair them, bring them up to code, spit them up a little, and then provide affordable rents through long-term rent agreement. We did several of these projects 15, 20 years ago. And most recently, we did one with Hip Housing in 2016. Inclusionary Below Market Rate Program, that is not something the city puts money into, but it is another tool in the toolbox. And that is a requirement on market-rate properties that the developers set aside a certain percentage of units to be affordable. So that is a very valuable tool that I just bring here for context, but not for funding, financing consideration. Down payment assistance, I mentioned that we have first-time homebuyer units. Some of those are provided by the private developers in the Below Market Rate Program. However, and so I'm not talking about those. Those are units that are targeted to certain affordability levels that we keep a waiting list. And as units come up, we go and find eligible buyers to buy them. But back in the early 20, 20 years ago or so, we did actually dabble in a down payment assistance program where somebody would get a loan, a second loan, where they could go out in the open market and buy a unit. Right now, the HART program has a down payment assistance program that's similar. But even back then, that was 20 years ago, the program required a large amount of funds to assist a small group of recipients. So we did not continue that program. Housing and Homeless Prevention Services is, like I mentioned, under our Community Development Block Grant Program right now, any kind of service provider can apply for those funds. But back when we had redevelopment funds, we traditionally set aside $100,000 to $150,000 specifically for housing-related services. And what that did was it freed up the CDBG money to go for other community needs, such as the focus on senior services, youth services, and basic human needs. And so that is something that since 2014 has not been available when the redevelopment funds went away. So again, that's a program that we have experienced and have done in the past. And then rent assistance is kind of a subset of the housing services, but it could be several things. Most recently, the council directed that our emergency housing money from the COVID CARES program be set aside for emergency, one-time emergency assistance. We typically have not funded that in the past, although we might have once or twice. But we've also funded programs like Assistance with Move-In Costs, First and Last Month Rent. We've also supported the agencies that have supportive housing that are serving community members with special needs, including the homeless. So rent assistance could be that sort of thing. And then there's also another concept called Rapid Rehousing, which is something the county oversees on the homeless assistance. And that is targeted financial assistance to families who are at risk of homelessness or in homelessness to figure out short-term financial assistance, say for several months, coupled with services to help them develop a plan to become more self-reliant. And so that's like sort of a special category of rent assistance called Rapid Rehousing. And it has its own set of guidelines and protocols. So that's why I bring that out to attention. And then other programs that we have not dabbled in that could be considered are financial assistance for accessory dwelling units. And then the other one that has come up to, that has been in the city's fair housing plan is the voluntary landlord participation in Section 8. And this was, this was put in our plan a few years ago based on the market conditions. The Section 8 program becomes less attractive to landlords in red-hot rental markets just because it's easy to rent units to qualified renters. And so although some landlords value the dependability of rent payments from the county during difficult times, which ironically are in place right now, others don't so much like the paperwork or perceive the renters as more challenging. The Housing Authority manages the Section 8 program and has developed a number of incentives over the past few years that have been successful. But they always welcome more landlords. So since this topic was included in the city's fair housing plan, we are including it tonight as well. I was asked to provide a quick overview of our RENA goals, the Regional Housing.
Sandy, before you move on, can I ask a question? Can we go back for just a second to that last slide? When you, when we provide assistance for accessory dwelling units, what's the mechanism to make those units affordable in the future? Is there a deed restriction or?
Yeah, so, yeah, I actually was going to cover that in a second, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Actually, if you wait, I do have that on another slide. I realize I kind of had it twice.
I jumped the gun, my fault.
It's okay, it's okay. So back on the Section 8, the Housing Authority is still, is always trying to attract, oh no, I was going to the RENA goals, the Regional Housing Allocation Goals. So I think the council is familiar with the fact that the city has in its housing element a plan to provide enough land to provide a total targeted housing allocation as a part of the region's need for housing. And that was 3,100 units for this housing element time period. We have made various progress on the various categories, although for the affordable categories of very low, low, and moderate. If we were to look at every housing project that we've either started construction or is in the pipeline, we still have significant remaining targets to reach. 530 very-low-income units, 337 low, and 362 moderate. And I just bring this to your attention in case the income targeting is something that's of interest in you and trying to prioritize funding. I will say that depending on the income group, there are various sources, resources out there to assist these types of housing. For example, and I apologize, there's a ton of acronyms on this slide. And that's just because I couldn't fit all this on the slide, so I'll read through it. But for very-low income, the city could use its own funds, the general fund and the commercial linkage fee, as well as our former redevelopment funds. But outside of the city, there are low-income tax credits. The county has funding available, the Section 8 program that I just mentioned, and a new program coming up, the PLHA. I will describe that in a moment. The low-income category typically is limited using tax credits. The county does not put money into low-income. They prioritize their funds into very-low. So some of the tools are the same for those two income groups and some are different. And then finally, for the moderate, oh, and then also with the low and the moderate income, that's where our BMR program, our inclusionary program, can provide units in those categories. The city's funds can be used for pretty much any of these categories, but some of the outside resources are different depending on the rules of those programs. So I'm going to go quickly through the funds that the city has. And the first one is the General Fund Boomerang. So that's funding that the city voluntarily has been putting aside, a little piece of the taxes from the former RDA areas to housing. The city did that from 2014 to 2019. This year, the city council elected not to do that, set aside, due to other budget constraints. So at this point in time, we have about 4.8 million available. We've not touched this money yet because we've tried to use some of the stricter funds first. And this is the most flexible. There are no income requirements and the city can frankly use it for anything at once. It seems best to be used for housing situations that maybe the other funding sources can't help because it's the most flexible. The Low-Mod Housing Asset Fund is the loan repayments from our former redevelopment agency. It has pretty strict affordability requirements. It also has, as far as low-income, it also has strict affordability for the length of time. Because of the strict rules, it's more, it's more attractive to be used for new construction, acquisition, rehab, the more traditional kinds of housing projects that the city has done in the past. And for that reason, there's only a smaller balance here because we are planning on putting the bulk of those funds into the downtown sites because that's a good match for those funds. The Commercial Linkage Fee is also very flexible. One of the criteria, though, is it has to address housing that will assist workers. So about the one category that can't be used, this money to use for is for senior housing because the idea is because their new commercial space has been developed in the city, it's created more workers and the impact of housing. So generally speaking, worker housing can cover a lot of types of housing. The income targets are pretty flexible. We can go up to 120% of the median. So it's very well-suited for new construction, acquisition, rehab, ADUs. It's pretty flexible as far as assisting housing units. The City Housing Fund is sort of a variety of deposits. There's some old defunct housing projects that any loan repayments come into this fund. Occasionally, we get an in-loe fee for a fractional unit for a small housing project under 10 units. We have some fees that are collected in this fund. So it's sort of a catch-all of various odds and ends. It's flexible, again, we do have a 120% median income cap. But because it's a small amount of money, I mean, we have 500,000 now, but any year, you know, we get like anywhere from like 20,000 to 100,000 into this fund. So it's best for small projects or small programs or one-time projects where you're not relying on ongoing funds. And then the new fund is a state program called the Permanent Local Housing Fund. We will be applying for this in July. And this is a funding source that starts this year and will be an annual funding source from the state to the city. It's a formula, so we'll be automatically eligible for it each year. And it's funded with the document recording fee that was implemented, implemented a couple of years ago by Assembly Bill 2. What's nice about this state program is it's more flexible than other state programs. You can use it for almost anything related to housing. Although it's focused on lower-income assistance, 60% of the area median income, it allows you to do some program, programming for households up to 150% of AMI in a high-cost area, which Samatail County is. For the construction of housing, for the most part, it does require a 55-year affordability period. But it does specify that ADUs are eligible. And in that case, the city would determine what the affordability would be. And that would be depending on how a loan program is structured. This program specifically calls out using it, using for housing supportive services to prevent homelessness. It specifically calls out rapid rehousing as eligible. And it's also used for all the traditional housing programs like acquisition and rehab. And then just to highlight real quick, there are some other state funding sources out there. At your next council meeting, there will be an application to the LEAP Planning Funds. This is, this is going to be, the city is already eligible for 500,000 for this. It's not competitive. You just have to show that you're using the planning funds to support and expand the supply of housing. It's specifically targeted to helping cities plan for their next housing element cycle. And any other program that facilitates housing is eligible. So you will, so you will see, it's not for housing projects, but it's for planning for housing. So you'll see that coming up. And then finally, the last state program also where there's an application due this summer is called the Local Housing Trust Match. And that is matching funds for cities that have some sort of local housing fund. And our Commercial Linkage Fee meets that definition. It's competitive grant, provides matching funds. The application and the scoring criteria were just released in the last couple of weeks. There was just a webinar last week. So the city and other local jurisdictions have been meeting to help each other sort through what the requirements of the program are and how it can best be used with the goal of trying to maximize the amount of money that we can bring together in Samatail County. So we've been having some task force groups meetings, actually since January, looking for this money and now, most recently, now that it's here. So although we know that the city is eligible, it meets the criteria for this grant, because of the competitive nature of the scoring and the relatively small amount of money for the entire state of California, it's looking like the city by itself would probably not be very competitive to go after this money on our own. But HART, the county's regional trust fund, will have a decent shot at getting the funding. They're hoping for like $3 to $5 million. So in order to apply for the money, you have to demonstrate that you have a match, either on hand or to be committed. So in an effort to demonstrate their required match, HART's been asking cities to contribute some funds so that HART can pool its match and be competitive for this money. The San Mateo Downtown Sites Project appears to be a really good fit for this, for this funding as far as the affordability and readiness because it's almost ready to get its planning approvals. So one of the things we've been exploring is a partnership with HART and the city to leverage the commercial linkage fees that we were planning on putting into this project so that it could be a potential win-win for both the city and HART. But I do want to let you know that this is still in the early stages of analysis. The countywide task force, looking at this up and down the county, what we decided to do was look at all of the housing projects in the pipeline and look and score them all and see which ones might be a good fit for partnering with HART. And so it's possible that HART may have a couple of cities partnering with them specifically for this money. So we will bring more information to you later. We're assuming that, you know, we're going to do all we can to try to get this money one way or the other. And just how we do that exactly is still a little bit in the works. So part of the consideration of programs is to look at what we're, what we're doing now and what we could do. Traditionally, the city has supported new construction. We're assuming that the city still continues want to do that. And we will still look for projects for joint venture and bring them forward. The same with acquisition and rehab. Although finding a property and working with a partner to acquire an existing apartment building and pull the funding together can be a scramble, it's still something that we have done in the past and we can still look forward. And then there's new programs that we could potentially, we're really looking for your feedback. And also wanted to tell you a little bit about staff capacity to implement these so that when we get through it all, we can prioritize which ones you think are most important. So the homeless and housing services and/or rent assistance, like I mentioned before, is programs that we really have in place if you consider that we're already doing this with our CDBG program. It could leverage the funds that we have already in place to assist more community agencies. The Community Resources Commission, which reviews the applications and awards the grants, has asked staff several times over the last couple of years if they could find another, another funding source to help serve more agencies because they really miss having those funds that we used to have when redevelopment agency was, was around. Also, any kind of housing assistance was brought up as a, as a, an interest of the community when we held our Home for All Community conversations last year. And then the ADU assistance, Joe, to get to your questions, assistance could be, could be a variety of things. We've already done some research to find out what, what cities are doing for this. There is a number of programs by cities that provide, you know, like $25,000 to $40,000 in loans in exchange for some kind of rent restriction. And they're all over the board how that works, both the affordability targets and the length of the, the rent restriction. All those things can be considered if you were to structure financing. So for example, you could have a loan to a homeowner to build an ADU unit in exchange for some sort of affordability for a certain length of time. Some of the options that could be played with is having a loan that's deferred. Maybe you don't have to make any payments on it. Maybe it's deferred even till the sale of the property. We've had rehab loans structured that way. Another tool, another loan product could be to forgive the loan. For every year of affordability, a portion of the loan is forgiven for five or 10 or 20 years. So those are all options and we're not ready to suggest that. There are other programs also out there. Samatail County Credit Union is just getting ready to launch a full-blown construction loan program where somebody can get 100% of the financing need to, to build an ADU. What's nice about the credit union is that they will underwrite the loan with the projected rent in the future as part of the funding to pay for the loan, which is not traditional underwriting and helps make the loan more viable. The other thing the county is doing is they just started a pilot program with a couple of cities to provide technical assistance for homeowners to build an ADU. And that's everything from citing the ADU on, on the site, getting a design, hiring a contractor, getting through the city approval process, getting the money to build it, going through construction, and then at the end, being a landlord. So it's like this full-service technical assistance there, thinking that the value of this assistance is about 25,000 per household. And so, I mean, that's something, if this pilot program shows is valuable, that the city could actually joint venture or do on their own. So, so there are several different ways to assist ADU construction. We have some tools in place now. We just are ready to launch the Symbium website, which will help people look at the planning requirements for an ADU on their site. The city has streamlined its fees for ADUs. So there are, and we're still doing our final community outreach to finalize the ADU ordinance. So if the city was interested in doing financial assistance, we could use the community outreach for the ordinance as well as financial assistance to get feedback on, on what seems to be real assistance for people interested in this. And then the, so that would, so that would take some staff time to implement, but there is some best practices out there. We've done some preliminary research. So that's something that, that can be done over time. And then the last program, the voluntary landlord assistance, as I mentioned, it's in our fair housing plan and it did receive some mention at the Home for All meetings, but not to the extent that housing services and ADU assistance, those were very popular concepts with our community meetings from last year. So for, to do this, if there are no existing programs, we would have to, first of all, identify the needs and interests from landlords and work with the housing authority to find out what the gap is from their, their own programs. So this would require the most staff time because there's no model. Redwood City did start to do some of this last summer. They held a convening for landlords to just try to explore, just to brainstorm, to get the conversation going. I actually did attend that meeting, but I don't believe they'd taken any next steps. So like I said, whatever, whatever we would do there would be, would be starting a new concept. So what we would like, some feedback from the council tonight. So what we would like, some feedback from the council tonight. So the programs that I described are these housing programs that the council would like the staff to work on. Are there other programs that council has heard about or would like staff to explore? And then what should be prioritized, given both our funding levels and staff capacity to implement new programs? So those are the questions that we'd like to get some conversation going on. And I'm going to go back to this slide because these are sort of the programs that we thought up to present to you. And so with that, I'm done with my presentation and I'm ready to answer any questions.
Andy, thank you so much. And could I ask again about the rehab project that we did with Hip Housing just a couple of years ago? How many units was it that we were able to get with the money that we invested in that building?
I have that spreadsheet up. Hang on a second. I'm thinking it was 16 units, but let me double check. So that was the... 110 Cypress, yeah, with 16 units.
What was our portion of the money that we put into that?
Yeah, so we put in 1.1 million.
It was a $20 million building?
And it was... Like 28 or something like that.
I mean, that's a tremendous bang for our buck, putting 1.1 million in and getting that many units. That's fantastic.
Yeah, so that was about, oh, so yeah, so let me give you a little idea on subsidy. So that one was about just under $70,000 per unit. And that's not, that's about average if you look over like the last 10 years on affordable housing. Now, when we, like, it gets complicated because like the last three projects have all been on city land. So we both donated the land and we put money into the project. So if you count the total city subsidy, our subsidy per unit has been anywhere from like 70,000 to 150,000 a unit. So that acquisition project for 60, 70 a unit was a pretty good deal, if you will.
And it wasn't our land.
It was not our land. That was just buying a property on the open market. Now, the county put money into that as well. So that's the other thing is the city subsidy is usually just a piece of the layer cake, if you will. And so depending on how many other sources are out there that can be used for that particular project has a big impact on how much money the city would need to put into it.
They just don't come along that often, do they?
Yeah, I mean, they don't always come along that often. And then the timing is something that needs to be really carefully looked at because if a property comes on the open market, a buyer usually needs to act a little more quickly than the city council agenda meeting's schedule. But I think what Hip was able to do on that particular project, which was really creative, was they had a friendly developer partner who was able to actually secure the building and hold it and then transfer it to Hip once they got all the money together. So that was actually a very creative solution to that.
We should try to be friends with those kinds of developer partners.
Absolutely.
Other questions from council members? Rick, go for it. Rick, we'll get back to you when you...
I'm here. Okay, so regarding exactly the kind of project you were just talking about, I know it's hard to find those kind of partners. And I'm just wondering, we all know that the real money for any kind of property deals is in private development. Is there ever any way, any kind of a case where it makes sense for a private partner to work with us on this kind of a project, Sandy?
To buy an existing market rate apartment building and lower the rents?
Yeah.
I think it's more suited for a nonprofit who's not profit motivated. For a private developer to do that, our money would have to fully offset the loss of the rent stream for the restricted units, in my mind. Otherwise, why would they be motivated to work with us?
Maybe they're interested in doing something good in the community.
Yes, if we could find those kind of partners, that could be the case.
Thank you.
Diane?
So I just want to, I just have a logistical question. It is, when I look at the staff report, you're looking for direction for, do I have this right? About $887,000? Because most of it's already committed to construction, right, Sandy? So you're kind of looking at things we might be able to do with the city housing and then the PLHA?
So the PLHA for sure. So our short-term need is to put together an application for the PLHA, which is anticipated to be $342,000 this year. And part of that, I forgot to mention this, thank you for reminding me. Part of the application is to put together a one-year plan as well as a five-year plan. And the state has already told us that we should plan for $2 million over the next five years. Whether we get it or not is to be determined because it's based on receipts. But in order to get the grant going, they want us to put together a plan for five years. So yes, so my most immediate, our most immediate need is to try to figure out what we think would be a good use of that money so we can get an application in. However, we actually have, if you look at all the funding sources, we actually have about $7 million available that's not committed. That right now, staff is assuming that we would use that for new construction, new housing projects coming forward, or maybe the acquisition rehab type project that could come forward. So those are sort of our bread and butter programs that we would be looking to bring to you. So even just in addition to the PLHA, the question to you is, are there other things that we want to use those funds for as well? And staff would then figure out like what funding source makes the most sense for what project. For example, our general, like ADUs is a good example. The state grant that we're applying for, definitely. They say you can use it for ADUs, that would be a good resource. But really, all of our funding sources could be used for ADUs as well. And the same with acquisition and rehab, so...
So it is that, like, let me stop you there if I may just for one second. So when I look at like the general fund housing for 4.8 million, that's outside of what we might be doing at our former redevelopment sites, just finding a spot for, okay. So that answers that question. Commercial linkage fee, that's all we've collected to date and we haven't spent any of it?
Well, that's what, we are looking to commit 3.8 of that to the downtown sites. So after the 3.8, there's the 1.3. So we actually have a little over 5 right now.
Okay, I'm with you there. Then on, if you could just indulge me one more, a little bit more. The city housing one for 5.45.
Yeah.
That's a lump sum that's sitting in there, it will not repeat, correct?
Right. It might go up a little bit from year to year, but it is kind of a one-time lump sum. What we use that for right now, the only thing that we actually use that for right now is, we do use it each year for our contribution to Samaritan House operates the Safe Harbor Emergency Shelter, which is countywide shelter. So we give them an annual donation. It's only about $20,000. And then we also use it for our heart fees, our heart membership fees. So we have an ongoing commitment of about, I think it's 50,000 or 60,000 out of that fund, but the rest of it is...
Okay, so that might trickle down a little. And then you think you might have a five-year plan for the 3.42?
Well, that's what we're looking for some direction tonight.
Okay, now I got you now. I just was trying to get a handle on the totality of the money. And for some reason, I thought every time I saw new construction, I don't know why I thought that was going to the downtown sites. But this is totally separate from that. You got some extra dough here. Okay, all right. So I'll kind of tell you where I'm leaning after we might be done with questions. But the mayor actually used the phrase that I was really coming into with this too, is how are we going to get the most bang for our buck? And I was definitely, you know, like really zeroed in on that. I think with the coronavirus, we're going to have a little more homeless/rent assistance needs than we may have had in a while. So I'm zeroing in on that, but I don't want to, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me ask those questions and I'll beg off for a while. Thanks.
Good questions. Anyone else want to ask questions at this time, Ameren's? Rick, you already got some questions. We'll get back to you for some more questions in just a second.
I'm perfectly willing to wait.
I have some questions sort of overarching in terms of what are the opportunities to address workforce housing in these strategies or in the prioritization?
So are you, when you say workforce housing, what's your...
Employee housing.
Oh, for employee housing. Okay, so certainly the general fund is the most flexible for employee housing.
When you say general fund, you mean the boomerang funds?
The boomerang fund. The, you know, staff did bring before the council last year a concept about a down payment assistance program for employees. And so if that was of an interest, that would be a good source for that. Because the incomes of city, the definitions of moderate income up to 120% of the median is pretty high these days. You know, incomes have gone up a lot the last couple of years. So any funding source that can assist people up to 120% of the median income is a potential source to help something for employees. To date, the staff has thought of down payment assistance. We did an employee survey a couple of years ago. Employees overwhelmingly preferred ownership opportunities over rental. And as you know, in the downtown sites, we are going to set aside 25% of the units for rentals for employees that make up to 80% of the median income. So there will be some opportunities for employee housing on the rental side in that project.
And then as a tag on to that thread about the ownership model, we have some ownership, affordable housing stock. How did that, how did those projects get built?
Two ways. So back in the late 80s, the city actually worked with a nonprofit developer to build units specifically targeted to first-time homebuyers. And there are resale price restrictions on those units. So as those units sell, new buyers can buy those units. And then the second way is through our inclusionary program, the below-market rate. So we have affordable ownership units throughout condominium projects in San Mateo when a market rate developer builds a condominium and sets aside 10% or 15%. So between those two programs, we actually have over 300 first-time buyer units in San Mateo that we, that are available for employees as well as the community at large.
We don't tout that enough, but they don't turn over every year.
They don't.
Do we have any control over how often they turn over? Like, for example, you know, there's the model, the teacher housing model where it's sort of a seven-year deal.
Yeah, I only know of that for rental. But for ownership, you can't really tell somebody you don't own your home anymore and you have to sell. So I don't know of any program anywhere that has a time restriction on an ownership program. As a matter of fact, many ownership programs have the policy goal, besides affordability, of long-term wealth accumulation. Because that is a traditional way that households tap equity to send their kids to college and so forth. And so that ability to create some equity is often one of the policy goals of ownership programs.
That's what Stanford does for their teachers, for example. But we don't all get billion-dollar subsidies from California every year.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? If not, I'll go to public comment. Do any of the attendees have questions? Ken Chin has a question. Go ahead, Ken. There you go. The floor is yours, Ken.
Hi, thank you. I'm glad to see everyone tonight. Thank you, Mayor Gothos, and members of the city council for letting me speak on this issue. I am speaking tonight as a San Mateo Foster City School District Board of Trustees as it relates to affordable housing. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic that we're all facing, the school district was looking and exploring different ways to provide educator housing to our community. While this item came up, and I know that you guys are looking at trying to decide preferences in terms of programs, I hope that you may consider or at least think about the fact that we as a school district are exploring it and hope to continue to explore it after we get to our new normal, as I would say for after COVID-19 or during COVID-19. But we'll consider that the school district might be a willing partner in any housing, affordable housing programs that you guys might look for in the future, current or in the future projects. As a former grant writer for the city of San Mateo, I do know that sometimes when you do partner with other government agencies, you might score a little bit better. And I will say that while I can't speak for any specific item for the school district, I'm sure that you will be find some interest from the district as it relates to affordable housing and how we can all serve our community and provide housing for everyone. So I just wanted to provide those comments, but thank you for letting me speak and it's great to see all your faces again.
Ken, thank you so much for your comments and we appreciate it. We love collaborating with the school district. And our routes to school are so safe these days. We're so happy that you succeeded in so many of those grant funding opportunities. So thank you very much, Ken. Any other questions or comments from our participants?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
I'm looking at our three other attendees along with Ken and I don't see any other questions. So I'm going to bring it back. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, Ken just answered part of my question, offering that the school district may be a partner looking for affordable housing in our city or in, you know, within the area of the district. So I think that's good. My question was to Sandy regarding what other, I mean, do we have any partners out there lurking that may be willing to work with us on any of this that you know of, Sandy?
Well, certainly the school districts are interested. The nonprofit housing developers are always interested in opportunities as well.
So what you need is for us to give you direction about how we'd like you to go about that.
Yeah, I mean, as far as finding the exact deals and the exact partners, we're not here to talk about that tonight. But what we're wanting to get is a feeling on, do we just kind of stay the course and focus on new construction, acquisition, rehab moving forward like we've traditionally done? Are there other areas you'd like us to explore and then bring them back to you?
Right. Well, I certainly feel like ADU is our new construction that I think we've been working on for some time now. I know the planning department is working to make it easier to get approved. The county is making it easier to actually get to the point where you can present something for approval. I think it's a low-hanging fruit and something we should actually put some of the available fund towards because it's something that, I mean, the time is here for it. And I think there are people interested in doing it. The easier we can make it, the more assistance we might be able to offer in exchange for some years of affordability, I think is a great idea. So that was, okay, well, that was my question and a comment. I have more comments if anybody's interested.
Yeah, I think we're done with questions and we did our public comment. We've closed the... Yeah, we're, I think we're done with questions and we did our public comment. We're, we've closed the public comment period. Comments are welcome at this point.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask one more question, just Rick, can you?
Yeah, yeah.
So why is it that the ADU, uh, can only be for a certain length of time on a deed restriction?
Well, that's, it, it doesn't have to be. Um, I think that, the, the common thought is if we're going to give local money to bill, local public funds to build an ADU, we want something in exchange. The easiest way to do that is some sort of affordability agreement. Um, it, you know, I've seen everything from five to 20 years from our just, you know, preliminary research. Um, I think that, uh, it's a function of what is the financial, uh, benefit to the owner to rent restriction a unit for X amount of years? And then so you kind of work into what financing is worth that. So it's kind of a, a three-pronged, uh, analysis on how much money, how, what the terms are, how cheap it is. And then, um, in exchange for what affordability. And, and so you, you have to kind of do some analysis on, you know, you're gonna, if you say, okay, we'll give you $50,000, but you have to rent it for a hundred dollars a year for 20 years, probably no one's going to take that. But, you know, what the other cities have come up with is $25,000 to $40,000 in exchange for five, 10 years is probably, uh, the target.
I, I thought that was an excellent question and I really liked that, um, that idea that we're getting as many units out there by, by bringing together the financing and trying to streamline the process and, and get these units, uh, affordable for as many years as possible. 20, 20 years sounds like a good amount of time based on, um, how much the city's putting in and, um, I, I, I think there's a lot of homeowners out there who they've got a, a big backyard and they need to help pay the bills. And, and this would be a great opportunity for them to partner with hip housing, get some, get some tenants into an ADU and pay the mortgage and, and it's a win-win for the entire community. So I, I really do like that idea. I already mentioned the, the, the rehabbing old buildings. I thought that that building that we did for 1.1 million, I've never seen us get such a return. Because putting the land in is so valuable. A, any of the other projects that we've done where we're putting the land in, um, it's really, you can't compare it as opposed to just putting in cash, even when the county is another partner. I, I really, uh, enjoyed doing that project. That, that was a huge bang for our buck. Uh, so those are the two things that I really see as, as priorities, uh, for me. Who else wants to chime in?
I'd just like to finish my, uh, comments if I could. The only other thing I wanted to mention was that I really liked the volunteer landlord assistance, uh, uh, thought. Because it's going to provide some, uh, coupling with, uh, section eight housing. And I have a feeling that as we have some financial difficulties over a period of time here, we're going to need more of that very low and government assisted kind of housing. And I know Sandy, you said it's kind of work intensive. But I think that we might also find that maybe not so much, uh, um, you know, more work for us, but actually a better outcome for low income people who need some help. That's it. Thank you.
Great, Rick. Thanks for those comments. Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just say it. Um, I, I really appreciate all the work you put into this, Sandy, and I, I think your general approach, um, I, it personally works for me. I tend to favor, uh, of course bang for your buck. Um, but also if, if, if the bang is similar, I tend to favor, uh, long-term assets that we're creating that it's going to be, um, 30 years from now, there's going to be, uh, the city council is going to be thinking, oh, wow, uh, way back when during, uh, the Corona crisis, that they were putting in policies, they were, they were putting in assets that we wouldn't even be able to, to think about doing today because land's so expensive. So I guess I would err more on the, um, on the investments that, that, that create, create that instead of, um, direct assistance is kind of more of a one-time thing. Although I know that different funds are used for different things. So I, I, I'm, when I looked over all of your, uh, your analysis, everything, I found myself nodding my head a lot, thinking that it, that it made a lot of sense. And, and just one comment on the ADUs. I mean, I think it's a, it's a pretty good idea on where we're going, but I would really like to see longer years, um, like set up where it's, it's really gonna be a, a long-term situation instead of, instead of a short-term. Like if, if a homeowner is thinking about doing this, it's a long-term partnership. It's not, oh, I'm just going to do this for five years and, um, then cash out on, on what I got from it. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Those are great points as well. Um, I just want to add one other thing. Eric makes a great point. I, I do think that for tens, if not hundreds of years, people will be walking by downtown thinking, wow, that city council back in 2020, they did an amazing thing with that downtown, uh, uh, opportunity site that where they built all those units. Ameren's, you had some comments?
Yes, thank you. I completely agree with WD Mayor Rodriguez about, um, about really focusing on acquisition and rehab, um, in terms of building out our portfolio of, um, of investment opportunities. And we always talk about how, you know, they don't make any more land. And so we really need to, we need to shore up our own internal processes and systems so that we can be more, um, you know, more agile and in, in seizing on these opportunities. And that, that for me would be, um, a good area of focus for, for us, the staff to think about, you know, what, what changes do we need to make so that we're not missing the boat, um, on, on these kinds of opportunities and looking at, you know, the potential market softening and more, more acquisition opportunities coming down the road. And I think that that could be a good, um, immediate, you know, priority for this year even. Uh, that, that to me is sort of like their number, the number one focus. Um, you know, a close second, first to, to, um, new construction. Um, and, and really, you know, the, I, I kind of, I feel a little bit, um, hesitant to, to put our very finite resources into subsidies for ADUs. Uh, especially when we know that there are financial products that are coming online really soon that will be game changing. And so it's, it's hard for me at this point to make that kind of commitment when, when we haven't seen what the market will bear and how it will change with these new products. And then also knowing that, um, you know, the county's, uh, assessment has, has indicated that it's not necessarily financing alone. That is the greatest barrier. And so for me, I think, like, exploring that partnership opportunity with, with the county and that pilot program in terms of supporting people through the process of getting the ADUs, looking and, and, uh, at how those products, they're out on the market. And then maybe revisiting the financing and subsidy opportunities, uh, further down the road would be my preference. Um, I, I mean, I think ADUs have to be a really important strategy that we embrace, but, but looking at where we are in the market and how, how, you know, do you just, should we have to be with every dollar? I'm not sure that that is actually the bang for the buck that we're looking for. Um, so, so that's ADUs. Uh, uh, in terms of the rental assistance and the rapid rehousing strategy for homelessness, like looking, going back to the community survey and, um, and homelessness being of a high priority, a need in the community. I think that, you know, I think that the strategy that the county takes in terms of homeless prevention, um, and in, in the rapid rehousing is a good use of dollars because if we're keeping people in their homes, um, and that are in crisis, then that's, that's money well spent. Um, uh, so, so those are kind of the, you know, the buckets. But for me, where I'm not totally sure, um, the overlay is and the prioritization is in, in the way this is laid out is that where employee housing comes to, to the, the mix. And I, I really do feel like, you know, as a, as an organization that keeps hundreds of people employed, that needs to be a, a focus of how we think about our resources. And, you know, when we're talking to, um, our, you know, our cops and 75% of our cops not living in the county even, um, and, and like the additional costs that we're incurring for recruitment bonuses and all of those, those, you know, the cost to their time and their health, but also the, the, the bottom line cost to us in the retention issues and, and the added recruitment costs. I, I just think that we need to be focusing on, you know, where those opportunities are for employee housing as well. Um, and then I, lastly, I'll just wrap up with the, um, you know, strong support for the local housing trust fund and, um, and the partnership opportunity with, with heart. And, you know, there is, I don't, I'm curious, I wanted to ask Ken when he jumped on, you know, is there, is there something stopping the school districts from also participating in, um, in that trust fund? And is there a way that we could bring them on into the fold with our application? Cause I think that that would really strengthen our competitive, um, uh, advantage.
Can I just, can I just mention that, hop on that? Um, so, uh, although working with the school district as partners on housing programs is, is definitely a good idea that we can pursue. Um, I don't think they're a fit for the housing, um, local trust because what they would have to bring to the table is a dedicated source of money, for housing, for the match. I, I don't think the school districts have that. Um, but we have it in our commercial link HP. That meets the definition. So, you know, there's other opportunities, but I'm not sure that's, uh, a good fit for that particular money. Thanks.
Diane, you had one more thing you want to say?
Oh, just a few.
I, I, oh, I'm sorry. I, I did not mean, I did not mean it that way. I, you had something you want to say. You say everything you want to say, please.
Thank you. Um, so I, Sandy, I like the way you did the summary for us in this, um, grid. And my feeling is the more flexible the money, and it seems like we have some big, um, pots of gold that are flexible. I would like to see those into some permanent construction. So, and, and you kind of set it up that way when you were saying what your recommendations were. So I was very good with that. I kind of agree with Councilmember Lee on the ADU. Like I'm a little bit not sure it's a total bang for your buck. And what I kind of see coming along is that we're going to have some real serious times. So the renters assistance and, um, helping people with their security deposits and those kinds of things. I think where, um, you have on the second page of your chart, um, where you recommend those, that's where my, um, strategy is at this moment in time. Um, I think we could, um, you know, if you, if you're really taking a look at the ADUs, maybe with some of the other more flexible construction money. But when we get to the second page, um, where you several times mentioned the direct rent assistance or housing and homeless services, I'm kind of leaning in that direction for the time being. And I know that with the state fund that, you know, they've said, hey, get a five-year plan together. Um, we can probably list both of them in there and then give ourselves the flexibility to do either ADU or the, the homeless slash rent assistance. Um, so that'll be a way of slotting in the ADU, but right now, like I'm not, I don't know, you gotta set up a whole program for it. I mean, I appreciate you're investigating best practices and you don't have to reinvent the wheel certainly. So I, I'm with you on that one, but, um, I just see like, there may be some, be some very dire circumstances coming at us much sooner than we anticipate. So that was kind of where I was on that one. But I appreciate that where it was flexible and it was big money, you had new construction as the first priority. And I, I definitely gives, that gives us longevity where people will drive down the street in the future and say, yeah, that's what the city did. And I agree with the mayor on that one that we rehabbed. That I was, I think newly on the council when that one came. And I remember thinking the same thing. I was like, it was just, I mean, and you showed us like what it looked like before and then after. And, and I remember thinking to myself like, whoa, that was a really good deal. So we can get some more of those. That'd be great too. But anyway, that's where I am. Thank you for the, uh, flexibility and sort of the sliding scale preferences. I was in agreement with him.
Again, uh, the downtown site, people are going to be driving by in their flying cars saying, wow, it's unbelievable what the city council did. Eric, you had one more thing?
Oh, if I, just one more thing. Sorry, Eric. I, I agree on the, let's try to get as close to workforce housing. Uh, you know, that kind of changed a little on those former redevelopment sites. And I was always like, you went a little below, like where a policeman was, but you might still capture a teacher. And I was kind of like, so I, I agree also on the, on the affordable, I mean, uh, workforce.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, this is a disadvantage going first. Um, you know, I was on the fence with the ADU, uh, the ADU stuff, but actually after hearing Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Pappen, um, I'm actually, I kind of leaned towards that side. So if there's three votes that way saying that de-emphasize the ADUs, I, I, I think that's a, a better way to go personally.
We really should just create a policy where we allow Diane and Ameren's to go first and then we can just agree with whatever they say. Um, it would be easier for all of us that way. Um, but I think to Ameren's point, lots of vehicles are coming forward to make the ADUs more affordable and programs that, that help people, uh, connect with tenants who really need the housing. And so those, those vehicles are important. Our limited resources might be better invested in things that are long, long-term, um, a, as they were mentioning. So I, I agree with that, but I, I'm not saying that I don't want ADUs to happen. And I'm not saying I don't want, I don't want those things to happen that we anticipate happening with ADUs. I think we see more ADUs coming online and we see many of them going to people who, uh, who need affordable places to live. So, um, Sandy, did you hear everything that, that was said? Have we given you enough direction on, on all of these things?
Um, well, the one, the one thing I'd like a little more clarification. So for the big picture, I can see where, where you're all going. And that's great for our, our larger pots of money and the money that we have control over. So our particular, um, need will be to put the application together, a one-year plan and a five-year plan for the PLH, a funny money. It's not funny, it's funds. Um, so it's about 300,000, um, 342,000 this year. And who knows what the next couple of years will be. So it's going to be a small steady stream of funding coming each year. Um, and so it's not, um, a real good use for new construction or acquisition rehab, although it could be used for that. Um, so I'm, I'm hearing kind of a split on ADUs and I'm kind of hearing a split on like rent assistance, rapid rehousing. And so, I mean, one way to approach it would be to do both and, and maybe delay ADUs for year two based on what's happening, um, or doing one or the other. But that's where I'm hearing the split from the council. So if you could help clarify that a little bit, that'd be great.
Additional, additional comments? Rick, you?
Yeah, sure. Sure. So since we're looking at our general plan update process, and I think we're expecting to change some uses in some parts of the city, I think we're going to find that we find many more opportunities where people, investors are looking at new opportunities in the city, in these new areas where we can seek to partner with them on projects and get workforce and affordable, um, in the future. In the meantime, I don't feel like we should be trying to save these small sums of money while there are actual needs out there. I just think we can look for other things that we can put that money to work on right now, soon, right? And then wait for these other opportunities. And of course, nobody should get me wrong. I always love new construction. Okay?
No, I, that's.
Yeah.
Well said.
Was anyone mistaken about that? No? Okay. Okay, good.
I love new construction also. I think that Rick makes, or Councilmember Vinnie makes an excellent point about, you know, this is, these are relatively small dollars accumulating every year. And it, um, if there's a way that we can, um, do meet immediate community needs through, um, through the rapid rehousing program, which is the, you know, which is the county's primary strategy for addressing homelessness. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Thank you so much, Sandy, for bringing forward, forward a council, we're bringing forward a conversation where we can talk about doing good things. Really doing good things in the community. We needed this distraction today with all the other things going on in the world. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We have three or four minutes until our regular meeting, um, where we will do more good. So I'll see you in just a moment.